Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the July 1st, 2013 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Honorable Mayor Sean Hyder.
Here.
Alderman Novitt.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda this evening is comments and reports of city officers.
First item is comments by mayor. I have a couple of things. We obviously have a big crowd tonight. The assumption is we have a lot of folks who are here for a particular item later on in the evening. I would just give you a couple tidbits of information. If you wish to speak tonight on the agenda item for the proposed assault weapon discussion, you must fill in a form that are outside the door. And we get those collected and we will go through those and call on folks based upon that stack of forms we have. We will have a limited time for discussion and I'll ask, as we get a little bit further into the discussion, everyone to kind of limit their discussion to a certain period of time. We want to get as many people to speak as we can. But I would also ask you, before we get too far, that if by chance you've heard the five people before you say the exact same thing you were going to say, I might ask you, just in the interest of time, to consider not stepping up, but you're certainly welcome to, given the time parameters we have. So, we'll go through that in a few moments. First item, actually, on my agenda is 2013 board and commission appointments and reappointments for the Gordon Board. Those are Mark Ventling, reappointed as chair and representative on the executive board; Peter Cherry, reappointed; Alan Werner, reappointed; John Looby, reappointed; and Sandy Turner, reappointed. All those to the Gordon Board. I need a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll move to approve the mayor's recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, unanimously approved. I did want to make one other comment. Bob, I may circumvent your comments a bit, but I wanted to plug our fireworks festival on Thursday evening. Doors open at 5:00 and it should be a terrific time. It's a great opportunity for the community to get together, so please consider it. Bring your family, bring your blanket, and it should be a terrific night. We'll keep our fingers crossed for some gray weather. That was all my report. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager, Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would only add that I understand there's going to be a celebrity in the beer tent serving beer, so you need to stop by and see the celebrity working that evening. Second item is just to, for warrant those residents in the fourth ward, that starting tomorrow, Landscape Concepts will begin the EAB removal process for diseased ash trees that are on the public right-of-ways. Unfortunately, we knew this day was coming, and starting tomorrow, we will start to see those trees come down. So if anybody has any other questions, they can either visit the city's website or they can contact the city forester. With that, Mr. Mayor, conclude my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Bob, very much. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. Alderman Moore.
I'd just like to give an update on Croya, just so everybody knows that Croya is open during the summer, lots of fun programs, and it's good to visit their website. They've got a lot of good activities. The Croya float that will come in the Lake Bluff Fourth of July Parade, we can meet in Lake Bluff at 9:30. And the Croya float is the last float in the parade in Lake Bluff. And Croya is for both Lake Bluff and Lake Forest. The Croya's Cubs Night coming up on Wednesday, July 10th. Will need permission slips from parents. And Activator Academy's summer music programs and lessons are happening. And if you haven't seen the facilities there and the staff there are just phenomenal. So that's an update from Croya.
Will you be on the float?
I'm not sure.
What are you playing?
Any other comments by the council? Alderman Edelman?
Yeah, with all the rain we've had, the median on Route 60 looks terrific. And the golf course is in the best condition I've ever seen. People should come out and play at the golf course. The fairways are, everything's lush and beautiful. We still should pursue long-term. A well to replace the city water, but the rains really made it look spectacular.
That's great. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. So if you have something to address the council this evening on an item that is not listed on the agenda, please feel free to step up. Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to the next item. Item number five tonight, items for omnibus vote consideration. There are eight of them. I will read each. If any of the members of the council wishes to take any of those items individually, we will do that. Otherwise, we'll take them as a group and vote on them at the end. Item number one, approval of the June 17, 2013 regular city council minutes. Item number two, approval of the check register for period May 25th to June 21, 2013. Item number three, approval of a resolution appointing the delegate and alternate delegate to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, Irma. Number four, approval of a restated Gordon operating agreement between the City of Lake Forest and Gordon Community Center. Number five, award of Lake Forest portion of the 2013 joint concrete sidewalk and curb replacement program contract. Say that three times fast. Number six, approval of FY14 contract for the annual tree and stump removals. Approval of an agreement, number seven, with Northern Illinois University for the placement of an intern. And item number eight, request approval of the agreement to proceed with Forest Park Board Corporation and waive the bidding process for site improvements at Forest Park. Would any member of the council like to take any of those items separately? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve those eight omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Moving on, next item on the agenda, ordinances, consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for FY2014 and approval of rollovers. I don't know.
I'll take that.
George?
The request is for a first reading of the ordinances and rollovers for appropriation of funds pursuant to the budget. We have to do a second reading and have a public hearing at the next meeting, but this is, while the budget is the document that goes into all the details of what we intend to do, the appropriations ordinance has to be passed in order to actually implement the budget. So, that's, this is first reading, and then at the next meeting, hopefully, we will have second reading and, or second reading after a public discussion. This is a budget that, obviously, we've all worked on throughout the course of the year. There's no, there are no changes to what was approved at a previous meeting, so that's the purpose of this.
Any questions or comments of George or Elizabeth, I think is here as well? Anyone has questions or comments of either one? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this particular agenda item? Okay. I will look for a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and the rollovers.
Yeah, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novitt.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. All right, next item on our agenda. I bet that's why you're here. Consideration of an ordinance regarding regulation on assault weapons. I'd like to make a couple comments and I'd like to draw some guidelines, if I may, tonight. Number one, thank you for coming. As we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, this is an important item. It's an item that merits discussion. It certainly is an item that merits a great deal of community input. We appreciate you taking the time to coming, to come tonight and give us your input. I know each of us on the council have heard over the last three or four weeks from many of you, some who I'm sure are here and some of whom are not. We appreciate that comment, those comments. We appreciate your feedback. It's important for us to hear that. This is an item that, fortunately or unfortunately, is kind of being thrust upon us by pending legislation in Springfield. But it's an item that has also been on the agenda of most boards and councils in the North Shore and our surrounding communities over the last three or four weeks as well. So, we believed it was important to put it on the agenda, important to have the discussion. And Lake Forest has, certainly has, a long history of civil discussion and civil discourse about items like this. So we appreciate your willingness to get involved and be willing to share your comments tonight. I do have a couple of ground rules. Again, let me restate, if you want to speak, you do need to sign a form. You do need to sign in with your name, your address, and your contact information. Susan Banks is in the back. She has other forms. If you have not submitted them, please do so now. We will call, I will call on residents, and I've got kind of a stack here, but I will call on residents first. And I'm going to ask each of your comments to be restricted to no more than approximately three minutes. I've got a stack here that is pretty thick. So, given that, I'd like to try to get us through as many comments and get as many pieces of input and information as we possibly can. And to limit that, again, I think it's just prudent to try to keep your comments to three minutes, and I'm going to try to keep this to 45 minutes or so, if we can, if we can do that. Again, I would ask if the three people in front of you had said the exact same thing that you're planning on saying, to consider whether or not you want to come up and restate. You're certainly welcome to. That's what you're here for. That's what we're here for, which is to listen to your comments. But I'd ask you to consider it. And again, we've had, we have a great history of civil discourse. I have no doubt that that's the discussion we'll have tonight. I know the council is eager to hear feedback and input from the community on this particular topic. I'd like to ask Bob Kylie, city manager, to open up the discussion, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, we're here this evening to talk about a very serious, important issue that, as mayor indicated, really does transcend Lake Forest and is being discussed in a number of city halls across the state since the Illinois Legislature passed the House Bill 183. The purpose here this evening is to really have a civil dialogue on what is a relatively simple question, that being, what is in the best interest of the residents of Lake Forest? For guests from outside of Lake Forest, I will just say at the outset, the staff has not been concerned as to what's happening in Cook County, Chicago, Springfield, or Highland Park. We're here this evening to talk about what is in the best interest of the residents of Lake Forest, first and foremost. We have received, as the mayor indicated, a number of emails, letters, phone calls on both sides of the issue. And it's clear that there are some very strong emotions on both sides of the issue. But I think what we have learned over the years here in Lake Forest is that we have to strip away that emotion and really look at the facts and the issue long-term, and so that we don't make any rash decisions as to what we may or may not want to do today at this moment. Let me maybe make a couple of opening comments, because there's a number of people that probably came here this evening with prepared speeches and texts, and as they're going to quickly see in a presentation that the city attorney, Marlo Del Persio, and I are going to be going through, that the city staff is not recommending a ban of assault weapons in the city of Lake Forest. We are not proposing to take the same course of action that our neighbor to the south, Highland Park, took. But we are proposing that we take a course of action that does preserve the city's home rule authority, which is truly a real threat. And we want to talk about that this evening. We want to explain where we are right now, because many people don't even realize that there are certain regulations in place today that will actually go away under House Bill 183. We'll talk about what House Bill 183 will do for us going forward and what the opportunity is in this very short 10-day window that we have to try and preserve some of that home rule authority going forward. And more importantly, come up with a program, not tonight, not within the next 10 days, but over the course of the maybe six months to a year, as to, again, what we think is in the long-term best interest of the residents of Lake Forest. So with that opening, I would turn it over now to the city attorney, Marlo Del Persio, that's going to go over what currently is on the books in the city of Lake Forest, and then get into a little more detail about what home rule authority is, and also with respect to House Bill 183.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As the city manager just noted, there are actually a number of regulations that are currently on the books affecting firearms that are already established in the city code of the city of Lake Forest. Right now, discharging firearms within the city limits is prohibited. Concealment of firearms is prohibited within the city limits. Possessing firearms at liquor establishments, possessing a loaded firearm, except at your home, is prohibited. And currently, police are allowed to provide for the safekeeping of firearms and weapons. As city manager Kylie alluded to, some of, many of these will actually be preempted by House Bill 183 when it goes into law, if it is passed. That doesn't mean that we need to amend the code right away. It just means that these regulations will no longer have any force or effect that the city can implement or regulate in those areas. So, that's something that the code can be amended down the line, but basically, these regulations will cease to exist. House Bill 183, thank you, which is the bill that we're discussing tonight, and you'll have a more detailed explanation of the bill by representative Drury later this evening. But it does regulate the field of firearms, basically, in the state of Illinois. It involved a pretty unusual action by the General Assembly, which preempted home rule powers. Currently, home rule municipalities do have the authority to regulate weapons within their boundaries. But this, this bill preempts home rule powers completely unless action is taken now or within 10 days after this bill is signed into law. The preemption is, is in effect except for with regard to assault weapons. And it's not assault weapons generally, it's just possession and ownership of assault weapons. Peculiarly, it doesn't call out home rule specifically, because courts have identified that there are, that home rule municipalities currently do have the ability to regulate assault weapons. So, within 10 days of the effective date of this ordinance, the city will either have to pass some kinds of regulations for the possession and ownership of assault weapons, or that ability to regulate evaporates completely. After that happens, it's completely gone, and there's nothing that the city could do after that point. The city does have the ability, though, to amend those regulations if they are already on the books. So that's another unusual feature of the law, as it is, as it has been proposed in House Bill 183. Just to talk a little bit about home rule powers generally. The city of Lake Forest is a home rule municipality because its voters, by referendum, gave it the right to do that. Home ruling municipalities basically have the right to establish regulations that are tailored to the local community, that are not consistent with state law for matters that are of local concern. This opportunity for local regulation happens, we're able to use that in a number of different ways in the city. And what it really does, it allows regulations to be tailored to the city, tailored to the city's residents, instead of dictated by Springfield. And as I mentioned before, under House Bill 183, once that 10-day window closes after it is passed into law, the ability to regulate assault weapons is gone forever. That's something that the city has the ability to do right now, that if it were not for House Bill 183, the city could do it in the future. But because of the way that House Bill 183 was worded with this 10-day window, the city has to act in some way if it wants to preserve that home rule authority in order to make sure that regulations are tailored to the local community. And when we talk about tailoring them to the local community, sometimes those regulations can be tailored in a way that's more strict than state law, and sometimes it can be more lenient than state law. And that's one of the benefits of home rule, is that it can go either way if you have that power.
For the benefit of a lot of our, for the benefit of a lot of our guests here this evening, and I believe there were copies of the proposed ordinance at the back of the room, the approach that we've always taken, particularly with significant legislative issues like this, is to provide the city council with various options. So the ordinance as drafted basically said you can do nothing and don't have to pass any ordinance going forward, all the way to if you wanted to do a Highland Park-type of full ban. It is not to say that we're recommending that, but we feel that it's our obligation as staff to present the city council all of the options that are available to you. The ordinances that are, the ordinance that is before you is recommended for first reading this evening, and it is something that, again, we really attempted to draft to just help frame the conversation and help frame the discussion, so you could do, do nothing, you could get into the, the education support area, registration, something that maybe we haven't even thought about, that may come up in the course of the conversation this evening, all the way up to a full ban. So, we want to emphasize that just simply because those were all there, we're not necessarily meaning that they were recommended, but we wanted, for purposes of full disclosure, to let the council see all the options that were available to them for consideration this evening. Obviously, in going into this, as, as the mayor and Marlo have indicated, this is not something that about three months ago was even on our radar screen. And unfortunately, because of the considerations by the state legislature, we've obviously had to give it a lot of thought here over the last 30 to 45 days. And first and foremost is the issue of individual rights. And I know that the council has seen that in an awful lot of emails, a lot of correspondence that you've received, and I think truly, the city and the city council specifically, has always taken this into account. But it's interesting, because it is a balance between individual rights and what's in the best interest of the community. And certainly, as the city council knows, that on many cases, whether it's a zoning case, whether it's a planning case, when we were talking about whether or not to ban the use of hand-free cell phones, we are talking about impacting individual rights. And so this is not a topic that is foreign to this city council, because you do this on a regular basis. But we want to be respectful in how we deal with those individual rights and make sure that they're just not taken away without full consideration of what the next bullet up there, which is preserving public health, safety, and welfare, because that really, truly, is the crux of what we're in the business of doing, is making sure that we are preserving that public health, safety, and welfare for all of our residents, both today and into the future. Also, a consideration that the staff took into place is first responders, and what impact this new law is going to have on police and fire. And again, this is something that police and fire are scrambling to learn about, what are we going to do in situations? And they are reaching out to fire and police personnel in other states that have had concealed carry laws in place for a period of time. And how do they respond to those kinds of situations? And so certainly, that was probably first and foremost at our, at our, part of our considerations as we look at this ordinance. Certainly, as Marlo indicated, preserving the home rule authority, and I will just say blatantly and on record, that the city staff will always recommend that we preserve our home rule authority. We cannot sit here and lambast actions by the state on a regular basis and then say, "Oh, but in this case, we'll just let them do it." I truly believe, in this case, the residents of Lake Forest, the city council, will always do what's best, and more so than we can expect out of our representatives at the state of Illinois. And so, whether it's this issue or any other issue in the future, the city staff will always come down on the side of preserving our home rule authority. And then finally, avoiding constitutional challenge and costly litigation. I don't think anybody in this room wants to get involved in that and see taxpayer dollars spent on constitutional challenges and so forth. It's unnecessary and it makes no sense. And I think that's part of why we're here this evening, is to really try and in a very civil, thoughtful way, work through what is in the true best interests of our residents as we go forward. So what is our recommendation here this evening? As I said, we are not recommending a full ban. I think first and foremost, we want to work with a committee of interested people and to look at how we can better promote gun safety and awareness. We recognize, in the city of Lake Forest, there are a lot of residents that currently own guns. That is not going to change. What I think we need to do, though, is spend more time, more emphasis on making sure that those guns are handled, are used, and are stored in a very safe and responsible way. And so that would be at the forefront. The other thing that we feel, whether it is done tonight, or whether through the passage of an ordinance it preserves our home rule authority, that we create a committee that can look at this in the future, is this issue about the registration of assault weapons. I will say, right up front, very honestly, I don't know anything about guns. I don't own one, and I don't know the difference between this kind and that kind. But I know that there's a lot of people in this community that do know that. And I think that with representatives of the city council, working with residents, working with members of the police department, that we can look at that issue and say, not with this clock ticking from the state legislature, but over time, in a thoughtful way, we can decide, does this ordinance need to be modified or tweaked in any way to better represent our community and better protect the residents of our community? And so that would be the recommendation of the staff here this evening. As I said, the whole concept of the gun safety and awareness education, we could model after our very successful Citizens Police Academy. It will take some time to put in place, but I think we can work with some interested and knowledgeable people to put that in place. And similarly, with respect to the committee, I think we've learned over years that we have a number of very intelligent, smart residents, that when the publicity of the cameras and the, and the threat of state legislation isn't hanging over our heads, that we can sit down and come up with some reasonable and rational legislation, if that's the direction we want to take. So with that, I will stop, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know we do have other speakers here this evening, and we can come back for questions if you'd like.
Yeah, maybe, Bob, perhaps let's move on, and then we can, during council discussion, we can open that up. I think you brought up some really outstanding points, and I think one of those points you heard mentioned several times is the whole idea of the home rule authority and our concern, our deep concern about losing control of that and how important that is here in Lake Forest. And tonight, we've also, we've asked State Representative Scott Drury to come and make some comments about that particular piece of the legislation, as well as some comments on the legislation as a whole. I don't know if Scott's here? Did I see him? He's not here? Okay.
I think he was coming from Deerfield.
Okay. Maybe he's stuck in traffic.
Deerfield's even more interesting than Lake Forest today.
He's held up in traffic?
Yeah.
He's on his cellphone.
Hands-free.
Yeah.
All right, then, let's move on. I'd like to ask Chief Jim Hald, who's our chief law enforcement officer and chief of police for the city of Lake Forest, to step up as well and make some comments from his perspective, from the police department and his role as chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I prepared a brief thing to read to you. I think it kind of covers everything without me trying to do it ad hoc this way. And let me just first say that the safety of the Lake Forest community is the number one goal of the Lake Forest Police Department. Although the Illinois General Assembly has passed House Bill 183, which is awaiting Governor Quinn's signature, the department takes no position on this legislation. Rather, the department is committed to defending the United States Constitution, including the Second Amendment, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, as well as enforcing state laws and local ordinances, recognizing both philosophical and emotional issues that are often raised when the rights and responsibilities are associated with... that are often raised when the rights and responsibility associated with the Second Amendment are discussed, the department does not seek to intrude on the city council's legislative prerogative to take action or not to take action in regulating firearms in light of House Bill 183. Nevertheless, there are some considerations that the department wishes to share with the city council and the community as discussion proceeds regarding whether Lake Forest should regulate firearms. Our department is very aware that many legally owned and responsibly used firearms are already present within the city. The large majority of these guns are never used for any unlawful purpose. Indeed, throughout my 28-year career, gun violence has been very rare within the city. On only two occasions in the last two decades, a firearm has been used to commit murder within the Lake Forest. More frequently, they've also been the method of several residents used to end their own lives. From time to time, the department has arrested resident and non-resident alike for illegally carrying a firearm or possessing a firearm as a convicted felon or without an FOID card. On many occasions, the police department responds to homes where acts of violence are taking place. Some of these incidents have required members of the police department to remove weapons from the homes for the safety of those residing within. These weapons are removed for safekeeping purposes only. Weapons, when legally owned, are returned to their owners as soon as legally permitted. Although so-called assault weapons in homes may pose a greater theoretical threat to first responders, safety, advanced awareness of the presence of firearms can be important for the safety of police officers and fire department personnel responding to homes where guns are present. This is especially true when the reason for police response is based on a domestic disturbance, but even seemingly innocent-sounding calls may turn dangerous to people within the home or for first responders. In light of these matters, and because of the safety of the people within the city of Lake Forest, is the top priority of the department, I believe that a requirement by city ordinance for safe storage of firearms would not put any undue hardship on gun owners. Also, should the city council require assault weapons be registered within the city, such registration may help first responders to be more informed about what circumstances they might be encountered at a location and therefore better prepare them in carrying out their duties. I also believe that the majority of residents who've made aware of this public safety aspect of a registration program would willingly comply because it would be in the best interest of the community. Whatever ordinance the city council deems fit to pass, the police department will enforce to the best of its ability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief, very much for your comments.
May I ask, Chief, when you refer to storage, what are you referring to?
In home, whether it be in a gun safe, gun locker, gun vault, gun cabinet, trigger locks, all the very ways of safely having the weapon in your home.
Under United States versus Heller, the United States Supreme Court held that you couldn't do that in a residence where they were used for self-defense.
Again, it's the storage of the assault weapons that we're looking to do.
Fine. How would things be different if there were firearms? And you talked about first responders going in. Do they go in armed, or what is the difference?
The difference is just knowing what you're going into. It's no different than if you, some of the buildings in town have hazardous materials in there. We know what's in those buildings. We just like to know what's in the house, to be prepared for what's in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to bring it back to the council now for opportunities for comment and certainly opportunities to ask either Marlo or Bob or Chief Held questions. And I'd like to go ahead and start with Alderman Palmer, if I may.
Thank you. We're all volunteers in this council, and we assist in our occupation. We served for a time, and then we return to the citizenry. So it's not our position to impose our views or prejudices on our fellow residents. I'm a director of the Chicago Crime Commission. Obviously, if there's a law that I think will improve law enforcement, I would be in support of it. But having reviewed this law, I don't think it accomplishes it. I think it creates other problems for the city, and I can't support it. And I'll explain my reasons. First of all, when we talk about preserving something for home rule, the bill that's on the governor's desk is clearly designed to promote a uniform regulation of firearms in the state of Illinois. We will have, as a home rule municipality, as every home rule municipality, no control over handguns, zero. There's nothing to preserve there. It's gone. The state has preempted us. The state has also preempted the transportation of firearms. We have nothing to say there. What we have left is ownership of assault weapons, which basically, they are single-shot rifles. Machine guns have been regulated since 1934 by the federal government. We have never had any power to regulate them. So we're just talking about rifles that every time you squeeze the trigger, you can fire a shot. We have never had, to my knowledge, any rifle crimes in Lake Forest. We have never saw fit to regulate rifles. Nationally, rifles are maybe 2.6% of any crimes committed. Professor John Lott of the University of Chicago has published studies that show that crimes go down when there is no gun control legislation because what the effect of these regulations are is to disarm your citizenry. And I think we should have some sensitivity toward protecting our citizens and allowing them to defend themselves. These firearms are legitimate forms of self-defense, particularly in the House. And we have two United States Supreme Court decisions that have addressed how the Second Amendment applies to firearms in one's house. The one I alluded to a minute ago, District of Columbia v. Heller, that was the first one in 2008. It involved a ban on handguns in the District of Columbia that was held to violate the Second Amendment because a citizen has a right to defend himself in his house. It also held you can't require them to have trigger locks because the idea is you want your firearm, in that case it was handgun, you want it available. So anything we do tonight by ordinance to try to say you must have trigger locks on your weapons or in gun safes, I seriously doubt will withstand constitutional scrutiny. It would be stupid of us to do this because we pretty much know what Supreme Court said. It has been made applicable to the state by Chicago versus McDonald, which is a 2010 United States Supreme Court decision, which was against the city of Chicago that said you can't ban handguns in the House. Again, applying the Second Amendment for defensive purposes, I would think there's really no difference between a handgun and a rifle as far as defending yourself in the house. There is a case, Wilson versus County of Cook, 2012 Illinois Supreme Court case, where the Illinois Supreme Court remanded back for trial the Cook County ban on assault weapons, saying that the Second Amendment ramifications had not been considered. So that is not a statute that has been upheld. It was, some parts of it were upheld, but not that. The last thing I think we need to do is to make ourselves target of litigation. I was the first chairman appointed to the legal committee by Mayor Rummel, and the reason the committee was appointed was we had been spending over $100,000 a year in litigation. After one year of the legal committee in existence, that had gone down to zero. The idea of the legal committee is they were supposed to review things like this and then advise the council. I don't think that's happened here. And again, it's not too hard to envision a city as prominent as Lake Forest, particularly when it's filled with residents who have the ability to file litigation, as we've seen even frivolous lawsuits, that we are not going to end up spending tens of thousands of dollars in litigating these ordinances. The problem is not with assault weapons. The problem is with crazy people. Crazy people will not abide by an ordinance like this. If they are crazy, they're not going to say, "Well, gee, I'm going to, you know, pay $750 if I don't register my weapon." If they intend to use their weapon, they face the death penalty. And, you know, if they wound people, it's less. I mean, the fact is, there are very, very serious statutes out there that blow away our little $750 fine if you keep an assault weapon in your house or don't register it. Crazy people are innovative. They have used commercial airliners on 9/11. They used drums of fertilizer in Oklahoma City in 1995. And most recently, they used pressure cooker bombs in the Boston Marathon. Now, I don't think we need to ban pressure cookers. The fact is, if someone's going to create violence, they will find a way. And these firearms are useful means of self-defense, and I think they're constitutionally protected as long as they're in the House. So the other thing is, I suspect Governor Quinn will do a mandatory veto of this law where he tries to put in an assault weapons ban that will apply to the entire state of Illinois. He already tried to do that once. It's been on his desk now for a month. I think he will wait till the last minute and try this. So those of you who think there should be an assault weapons ban, you may indeed get it. But I don't think we should do it. I don't think it's in our economic interest. I don't think it will accomplish anything for safety, and I think it will be bad for our residents.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your passion about this. I really do. I would ask you to hold your applause, please. We'd love to get through this discussion in a reasonable timeframe and love to get as many of you up here to give your comments and your feedback as possible. So I would ask you to hold on to that. And I'm going to ask the council to indulge for just a moment. Representative Scott Drury has arrived. We appreciate him coming up to make a couple of comments about the legislation and how it impacts home rule.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm here, I met with the city manager, Kylie, and he requested that I come just to present a few of the facts about the law. I'm not here to push any sort of agenda or to encourage this council to take one action or another. On the last day of session, on May 31st, the state pursuant to a court order by the Seventh Circuit, the federal court here in Chicago, passed a law that allows for concealed carry in Illinois. That was our mandate by the federal court, that Illinois was the last state that didn't have a law permitting people to carry concealed weapons in public, and we were tasked with finding or passing a law that allowed for that. We did that. In addition to allowing for concealed carry, this law preempted various home rule authorities that the city of Lake Forest and all of the home rule municipalities across Illinois had. One, it preempted the city council's home rule authority to regulate handguns and ammunition for handguns. These local municipalities with home rule can no longer regulate that. If you have an ordinance regulating handguns and ammunition for handguns, that will no longer be a valid law should the governor sign this bill into law. It preempts home rule for concealed carry, weapons that are carried concealed, handguns and ammunition. And third, it preempts home rule for assault weapons and assault weapon regulations with some exceptions. The law also sets, and we'll talk about the assault weapons regulations in a minute. With respect to concealed carry, the law puts into place various prohibited areas where people are not allowed to carry concealed weapons. It sets forth an objection process that your local law enforcement, the police, where they can object to someone who has applied for a concealed carry permit through the state police, and it walks through that objection process. And it sets forth various revocation procedures that are allowed to take away someone's license should they be using it in an improper way. The new law, as it currently stands, by July 9th of this year, so that's just next week, we need to have a law that allows for concealed carry in Illinois. Within 10 days of that law becoming effective, local governments will be barred from passing any new assault weapons regulations, which if I walked in a little late, I apologize for that. I was at another meeting. That is what has, I think, was the discussion here why so many people from the community have come out and have come out in many communities to talk about this 10-day window that local governments have to pass assault weapon regulations, not bans, just a regulation. If you do not have a regulation on the books related to assault weapons within 10 days of this law being enacted, you cannot have one. And so we have seen Highland Park went to one end of the spectrum, and they passed a ban. I believe Deerfield tonight is going to be talking about just regulating how assault weapons are stored in the home. I've seen various versions from this city council. When we convened a meeting of the mayors of all the towns, we simply wanted to present the facts, that it's a use or lose. If you don't do this, you will lose the right. We don't know what's going to happen in Lake Forest tomorrow. We don't know what's going to happen in Lake Forest in one year or 10 years. But we do know that if this law, if this bill becomes law, within 10 days of it becoming law, and you do not have an assault weapons regulation of any sort on the books, you will lose the ability to have it now and in the future. Within 180 days after the law becomes effective, the state police are required to start making applications for concealed carry available. So it won't be immediate. There'll be a possible six-month delay before someone can actually get a permit. And the state police are also tasked with coming up with a searchable database so law enforcement can look and see who's applying and decide whether or not they want to object to it. There is a series of restricted places where people can carry concealed weapons, cannot carry them, I'm sorry. Schools, daycare, universities, colleges, you will not be allowed to carry weapons. Government buildings, such as this one, and the parking lots of people of these buildings, you will not be allowed to carry concealed weapon. Hospitals, mental health facilities, public transit, the metro, the pace buses, public gatherings, if there are fairs in your downtown area, farmers markets where you have to issue a permit for that to take place, people would not be allowed to carry concealed weapons. But if they already had a weapon in a public area and were simply passing through, they could have the concealed weapon with them. Amusement parks, zoos, you know, places where people gather publicly, parks, playgrounds, those would be prohibited areas. And for your local business owners, establishments that serve alcohol, where more than 50% of their receipts are from the sale of alcohol, they cannot have concealed weapons in those places. If there's less than 50% receipts, it's a restaurant, but there is alcohol that is served, concealed weapons may be permitted. Where can people carry concealed weapons according to the new law? Your public beaches in Lake Forest, there's no prohibition on the public beaches. Any Lake County Forest Preserve in this area, people would be able to carry concealed weapons. Talked about the restaurants. Private property, your homes, you don't have to have a sign. You can regulate your own homes. But if it's a commercial property, it is the owner of the property who has control of that property who can make the decision, which may create some issues with landlords and lessees and lessors, who gets to decide whether or not a concealed weapon can be carried. If the decision is made, there will be a uniform sign put out by the state police, we're going to carry them at our office, that people can put in the window. It's going to be a four-by-six sign that says concealed weapons not permitted here. Roadways, sidewalks, bike paths are places where people can carry concealed weapons and in your vehicles, you can carry them. I'm happy to take any questions. Like I said, my goal is just to lay out what the law says, lay out the consequences when it comes to the assault weapons regulations, and make clear that I am not here, despite what some people think, to advocate for an assault weapons ban. If that's what this council wanted to do, that's your prerogative. I think the state overreached in trying to tell you what to do to begin with, so I'm certainly not here to tell you what to do now. I'm simply here to let you know what will happen if no action is taken.
Representative, and thank you for taking the time to come out. It's an interesting discussion, and the one thing that has been a question to me is, the state has preempted the city of Lake Forest and other home rule communities in regard to handguns. Why did they carve out this one exception? Why did they throw this at us? Did they consider assault weapons to be an extreme? There had to have been some motivation or consideration.
There wasn't a whole lot of talk on the floor about this one specific carve-out. I do know that there was a draft version that wasn't presented for a vote where there was no exception for assault weapons. There wasn't this 10-day carve-out. Cook County and the city of Chicago has an assault weapons regulation in place. It would have affected the city of Chicago. It may have been, and I wasn't part of that discussion, that the city of Chicago, as part of agreeing to this, or at least as a way to get votes, they needed to get a certain number of votes in the House and Senate, came up with this compromise that if a regulation is already on the books, it's a grandfather clause with an exception to kind of backtrack you into the grandfather clause to allow the assault weapons regulations that already existed to stay in place. And I had advocated personally for our areas. I wanted more local control over these prohibited areas. So that debate was going on throughout the bill. This was the compromise that was reached. I didn't vote for this bill at all, so I'm not going to pretend that I did. But the divide was local control versus uniform control. And with assault weapons, we weren't tasked to do anything with assault weapons, so there was more leeway. The fact that we're here discussing this tonight and discussing it all over these communities is because what I see was an overreach by the state of Illinois to try to take on an issue that no one asked us to take on. If this wasn't in the bill, my guess is Lake Forest would... If this wasn't in the bill, my guess is Lake Forest, you would be talking about other city business, but not an assault weapons regulation. I assume Deerfield and Highland Park would be the same. It's only because we did this, that advocates on both sides are coming out to talk about this divisive issue. But we weren't, we weren't charged with doing it, we weren't asked to do it, and so they put in this 10-day window, and it's forcing people to make decisions that they otherwise wouldn't have to make.
Can you clarify what House Bill 183 defines as an assault weapon?
House Bill 183 does not define assault weapon. It defines handgun. And it defines handgun, and I'm going to paraphrase, I don't have the bill in front of me, I apologize.
How do we get preempted? How can we be preempted from legislating something that's not defined? We can define an assault weapon to be anything, right? We can define it to be a fully automatic rifle, like a machine gun, which is already federally prohibited. And then if we want to amend that later, we've got the right to amend, correct?
There is a definition that the bill works off of. It's, oh, that's our city code suggestion, I'm sorry. Where did this come from, this description, this definition?
The city code definition that was...
To answer, to get your question answered, sorry.
The city code definition that is proposed in the draft ordinance that you've received is from the Cook County version of the assault weapons ban that has, has been affirmed by courts up to this point.
I've seen that. My point is HB 183 does not define...
It does.
It does?
Yeah, if I can help the representative and my colleague out, in the same section, which is section, subsection C, it says, "For purposes of this subsection, assault weapons means firearms designed by either make or model, or by a test or list of cosmetic figures that cumulatively would place the firearm into a definition of assault weapon under the ordinance."
That's pretty circular to me.
And that is my point, is that it leaves it up to the, what it defines is handgun, which, and again, I'll paraphrase, is a gun that can be shot with a single hand, okay? And then it allows each individual council or municipality with home rule to come up with a definition of assault weapons and then to regulate them. And if you do regulate them, you can later amend that regulation. So, you could make it more restrictive, you can make it less restrictive, but if you don't have it in place at all, you can't do anything with it. And that's how the law is written.
So, we could define a potato launcher as an assault weapon, and then we preserved home rule and come back and amend it anytime we want?
I don't want to give any legal advice, I see you have your city council there. Your city attorney, I should say, so, but it doesn't, in there, there's no definition of this is an assault weapon and this isn't. Thank you.
I have a question on, on part of 183 that spoke to the responsibility of bar owners, of which I'm not one. But it said there were penalties for people who owned liquor establishments for permitting concealed carry people into their location. So, it wasn't just the problem of the person carrying the gun, and I thought, I was wondering how that could be enforced, or how that would manifest itself into, into something that the police force would get involved with, and how would this, how could somebody be responsible for a concealed carry? They wouldn't, they may not want it there, but how could they be, how could this work to be a problem for a bar owner?
Where it could be a problem, and again, the enforcement, the council would have to speak with their city attorneys about how they were going to deal with it.
Well, this is statewide handgun, concealed carries.
Right, right, but in terms of how the police are going to enforce it, if an establishment has in excess, if their gross proceeds are in excess of 50% from the sale of alcohol, they cannot allow people to carry concealed weapons on premises.
How do they stop them, is my question? When I read laws like this, I, how would, if you're, if you own a bar, how do you stop somebody from having a hidden weapon?
Again, I think that...
Sign up, is it?
They certainly could have a sign up. The concern that the law has, and I'll answer your question as well, is with a restaurant owner or a bar owner trying to falsify their receipts, right? And so, that would be one way, that someone is falsifying how much liquor they're actually serving to get under that 50% rule. That might be a Department of Revenue issue, it might be a state police issue, there may be random checks of receipts to find out. That is one of the major concerns. If someone comes into an establishment where they know if it's a bar, and it's, you know, 85% sale of alcohol, it's a prohibited area. I don't believe the law technically requires them to put a sign up. I've had, I've had pro-gun constituents write to me and say, "That should actually be changed. In Texas, it requires there to be a big number 51 in the window with a gun crossed out." And that should be the sign in an establishment, and that's certainly something that should be considered, so that the bar owner can take care of its obligation with a single sign. Otherwise, I think, and again, you'd have to talk with the city attorneys, it's going to maybe come to a reasonable person expectation. What did the bar owner do? Was the bar owner an ostrich and put his or her head in the sand? I'm not saying that's how it's going to be, but, you know, there's establishments all over where people under 21 are drinking, and sometimes there are, you know, offenses and citations because the owner is knowingly allowing that to happen, as opposed to someone coming in with a fake ID. And that's just, it's going to be the issue. So, I hope that somewhat answers the question, but it's a new law, so we're going to have to see how it's going to be enforced.
Was there any criticism of the state with the 10-day window? Yeah, I mean, as I sit here, and I see the surrounding communities discuss form laws, 10-day window kind of creates a patchwork of laws, non-well-thought-out laws. Did anyone question that? It's what we're stuck with today, and I think it's indicative of, I'm sorry to say this, with you serving on it, but just the state of the Illinois... That might be them feeding back at me, but just state government in Illinois, it's maddening to a lot of us. To a certain degree, I get upset when we see the dilemmas with the economics in the state, the lack of attention put towards pensions, and then laws like this are thrown at us in a piecemeal fashion. I, I'm truly disturbed. I see the 10-day window in front of us, and I'm thinking, again, we're creating in Illinois now just another poorly thought-out law, but we're stuck with it at this point. I'm an advocate of home rule. I don't want to give up any rights that the city of Lake Forest has acted to gain at this point. I don't want to pass a poorly thought law either in a gut reaction. Did they think of a larger window, or is there motivation for the small window that's passed us today?
I think, there wasn't a whole lot of debate on the floor about the 10-day window. I can tell you through private conversations I had with the lobbyists for the National Rifle Association afterwards, was it was thought that councils wouldn't move fast enough to enact, to enact these. So, what I did personally for the communities that I represent, was one of the first things we did when I got back to the district, was convene a roundtable of the mayors and the police chiefs and city managers to say, "Hey, this is the law." And we prepared a presentation, which I gave to the city manager, and again, wasn't advocating, just said, "This is the law, this is the window. I don't know when the governor's going to sign this bill. It could have been three weeks ago, and it would have been 10 days from then, it could be July 9th." There's talk of the governor vetoing the bill, and there's also talk of us being called down for a special session on July 8th, in case he does that, so we will be sitting there, because there were enough votes on the original bill to override any veto.
So, in reaction, if we enact some form of regulation, we preserve our right. We could see what the state is going to do, and then we could act from there. But if we don't do anything, we don't preserve the right to act further. We could say all assault weapons should be painted red in the city, or some ridiculous ordinance just to preserve our right to move forward?
And again, I don't want to get into the legalities of what passes as a regulation, but yes, if you have, according to the bill, if there is an assault weapons ordinance or regulation in place, within 10 days of the bill being enacted, so let's say July 19th, if it's signed on July 9th, that will be grandfathered in, and you could then amend it. If it's July 20th, you're out of luck.
Okay. Another question, and to follow up a little bit on Alderman Palmer's points. If we were to pass an ordinance tonight to regulate assault weapons, and the state, two years from now, outlaws all assault weapons, this would be, and we didn't, we could protect our right to keep assault weapons outside of a state ban because of our home rule authority. Is that, did I understand that properly?
The answer is yes and no. The state with the supermajority of votes in both the House and Senate can preempt home rule. That's how they were able to preempt home rule with this legislation. So, if Lake Forest tonight, or in two weeks, or before the 10-day period runs, puts in an assault weapons ordinance, that would be your home rule right to do that. If the state next year and 10 years decides that we want to preempt all home rule for assault weapons regulations, and they can find the, I believe it's 71 votes, or the supermajority in the House and a supermajority in the Senate, they can preempt that, again, just as they did with these three preemptions that we see in the bill.
But outside of that supermajority effect, this could, this, a regulation that we would move forward to could, could make our rules more conservative, or more liberal, as they relate to assault weapons.
Right, you would, you would keep the ability...
Have the right to do that as it relates to the state laws.
You, right. As home rule is preempted, Lake Forest would have the home rule authority to regulate assault weapons in the way it sees fit. And that's what I've been saying everywhere I've gone. It could pass an ordinance, today, you could pass a ban, I know that's not what's being discussed, and you could scale it back, or it could be the opposite way, or it could be a middle ground, but you would save your, your ability to have local control over this local issue. If you don't, you lose it.
Mechanically, could a regulation be that we have chosen to have a regulation that has no regulations?
You would have to talk with your city attorney about that.
Well, let me ask this, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Drury, or maybe more for the city attorney, but I'm just going to throw this out, out there. I'm an advocate of home rule as well, and yet, I share Alderman Palmer's concerns with this particular ordinance, and I don't feel that I can support it either, for many of the reasons that were stated by Mr. Palmer. I don't think that, I think we have to be very careful, and that our home rule authority does not give us the authority to create an ordinance that is unconstitutional, or that might be unconstitutional. And yet, it seems to me that perhaps what we want to do here is to preserve our right to create an ordinance if the, if we feel the need to in the future, and we may, we may never feel such a need. So, couldn't we do just that? Instead of, couldn't we just pass an ordinance that said, "We're a home rule community, we want to preserve our right to create an ordinance regulating assault weapons if we choose to in the future, consistent with court rulings and applicable case law, and say nothing else." And that way, if six weeks, or six months, or six years, or 20 years from now, we want to exercise this, this right, and it's been upheld in other communities, and we want to readdress the issue, at least we've saved our, at least we would have the opportunity to do so.
And I think there would be, there would be a way to do some kind of placeholder ordinance like that, but under the language of the bill, it says that the regulations on the books to preserve that authority would need to purport to regulate the possession or ownership of assault weapons, and in a manner inconsistent with this act. And so, there would have to be something that tied it into the possession or ownership. I don't think that, I think that any attempt to amend something could be challenged if you just said, "We intend to regulate this," or "We intend to preserve our authority to regulate this." I think that there actually would need to be some kind of hook regulating the possession or ownership. And that could be any number of things related to the possession or ownership, but I think that that hook should be in place to fall within the language of the bill.
Could they say it is legal to possess an assault weapon in Lake Forest?
It would have to be a manner inconsistent with the act, and so, it would need to be something that was not, not otherwise allowed by the act.
How about something that required the owner to voluntarily apply a red sticker to all assault weapons?
For the possession or ownership, I think that if you define assault weapons and you have some regulations that get a hook that are related to possession or ownership, you will be able to preserve that. Obviously, this isn't before a court, this hasn't been challenged, it's very new, and this is a very unusual provision in the bill. So, I can't speak to what a court would say, but in looking at the language of the act, if we have something that is tied into possession and ownership, I would think that you would be able to preserve the regulations, preserve your home rule authority for future amendments to those regulations.
But also invite more litigation.
It just seems to me there should be a way, a way to do that. It doesn't make sense to me to, to pass an ordinance like the ordinance that we've been presented, and then form a committee and have more discussions about it, and then draft more ordinances and have more discussions about it, and, you know, run the risk of, of it being challenged constitutionally and have to go through those sort of legal challenges. That doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And yet, it seems that all we really want to do here is just say, is just to preserve our right to address this sometime in the future, if we see fit. Because these ordinances that other cities, Cook County and Highland Park, whatever, maybe they'll be upheld, and maybe in the future, we'll say, "Hey, that worked pretty well, and we may want to, we may want to reexamine this."
Well, I think, Alderman, just to clarify, and maybe I did do a very good job at the beginning, the way this was drafted, and maybe it didn't come out in color in your, in your copies, but there was paragraph two, which was the assault weapon storage restrictions, paragraph three, which was the registration, paragraph or alternative, which was the ban. And I think to answer your question, at least in our conversations, we thought that if you wanted to do the bare minimum and meet the conditions as set forth in state legislation, then it was the paragraph two, which was the storage restrictions. That that would keep your foot in the door, and we could talk about the language there and modify that if you want, but we felt as though, and again, no one's aware of how this is going to play out. Some communities are being much more restrictive than others. I would anticipate that there's going to be legal challenges, it's going to be against those communities and not us, but I think that then we can revisit it at a time when we have more thought, and we can give it further consideration, as you said, that we just keep our foot in the door, if you will, that allows us to craft something long-term that best suits our needs.
Could I, could I ask the council if, perhaps, if we, any other questions for Representative Drury? I don't know if he has another place, another stop tonight or not. If there's anything else, while he's here, to address with him before we continue our discussion. Any other questions for him?
I have one. First of all, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. I don't know that without your involvement, this would have seen the light of day, and I think it's a very important issue. I am a huge believer in home rule. It's been, we worked hard to get it here. It has been incredibly beneficial to the community, especially financially, and, and in a very tough time, some of the things we've been able to do through home rule have really kept us on an even keel, and would not have happened had we not had those rights. So, and it's, it is a, it seems to be a thing, for lack of a better word, that isn't well-liked in Springfield, because it takes away their ability to dominate the communities and take their money, frankly, and control it and use it for the purposes that they like to use it for, which they have no claim to be responsible about. And as a matter of fact, my, and to paraphrase, maybe be a little more blunt than Alderman know of it, I would love to know what the hell is going on down there. It is an absolute travesty, and it's a, it is, it's an embarrassment. I travel all over the country in my business, and I am constantly talking about, with people who were not there to talk about this. "Oh, you live in Illinois, wow, what's it like?" You know, it's really, really embarrassing to have to defend this system that is so obviously broken, and nothing seems to be being done about it. So, to give, with all due respect, to give the people in Springfield any rights over anything that we do here at this point, given the lack of responsibility that they've shown, is anathema. And so, that's, so, but, and I, clearly, based on this conversation tonight, you would, you would not be in that group, so I appreciate, and I think we appreciate your responsibility here for bringing this to our attention, so.
And if I could just make, thank you, if I could just make one, one closing comment. One, I'd be happy to come back to the council and talk about all the issues you just raised, because I have the same issues there. With respect, Alderman, to the issue of what, just getting a placeholder, I think as the city manager said, it could always be amended. The state put you in a horrific position. We did, I was part of it, I voted against it, but we put you in this position of having this 10-day window to come up with...
to come up with something, and, and it's, it's not good government, what we, what the state of Illinois did to you, this was Mike Madigan's bill, so Mike Madigan did this to you, and, you know, we're, we're standing up to him, you'd be standing up to him if you voted for, for an assault weapons regulation, but if you get something on the books, you could, you could then study it and amend it, and make it better, and make it closer to what the council as, as a whole wants, but if you don't do anything within the window, it, it's gone, so I appreciate all the time you've given me, our office is happy to be a continued resource for this issue and any other ones, and, and thank you so much for giving this serious consideration.
Representative Drury, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate your time and, and your insights, I'll go back to the council for any other comments, Alderman Novak, anything else from you?
Oh, I, I strongly favor what the city has recommended as far as potential education, registration, I, I'm gonna be transparent, I, I, I don't want to represent something that I'm not, I am a gun control advocate, I don't want to falsify anything and have motivations taken differently, however, knowing that I'm not advocating at this point a total ban on assault weapons, I, I don't think that's what we're here for, nor is the council pushing for that, but being thrown by the state of Illinois, the immediacy of taking some action and crafting it to the wishes of the community, I think that we do have to enact some type of regulation to at least preserve our home, home rule rights, I agree with Alderman Padaleon, the state at least, as far as how they've acted, we don't entirely trust them, or at least I don't, we fought hard for the home rule to preserve interests of the city, and it's something I don't really want to see eroded at this point, I don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction of what I'd wish, the council will take care of that by majority, but certainly, I want to craft this, I want to have a well-thought-out decision, and I don't want to be told by the state over a ten-day period, that apparently, partially is going to be subject to a holiday weekend, further eroding the time to have a poorly crafted law enacted, or just to not react, and then in the future to have a need for it and have that removed, I'd be advocating, again, be supporting the recommendations of the city staff in regard to this, and be it a placeholder, however determined, I think we have to preserve our home rule rights.
Thank you, any other comments from the council, Alderman, Alderman?
Yeah, first of all, I agree with everything that Alderman Palmer said, the underlying intent in the draft legislation is noble, promoting gun safety is important, there are now on the books laws requiring people born after a certain date, if you're a hunter, to take a hunter's safety certification course, for those in Lake Forest who own guns, who aren't hunters, but maybe they're clay shooters, all the gun clubs promote and instill gun safety, so, even though the draft legislation proposes to enhance, impart the wisdom and knowledge of gun safety, I, I think there are already those mechanisms in place, but maybe for the small percentage of people who just go out and buy a gun and stick it in their house, and they're not a clay shooter or a sportsman, and I'd like to think that they handle their gun safety, so, even though it's a noble cause, I don't think we need to legislate the proposed ordinance for gun safety purposes, we've got the ability to amend an ordinance once we put it on the books, I think home rule is important to preserve, yet, I'll be so bold as to say, if we do nothing and we let this, the state preempt us on this one sole issue, I don't think it undermines our home rule strength all that much, but I'd rather see us put something on the books that gives us the ability, ability to amend in the future, I think the registration is cumbersome, not necessary, one question I do have is, anybody who's a lawful owner of a weapon or ammunition has to possess a FOID card in the state of Illinois, and I think a legitimate issue is the first responders from our police and fire department having an awareness of what houses possibly have firearms in them, I'm a little unclear whether the FOID card holder information is available to us, because if it is, I would think that's sufficient information for first responders to have, and yet, I read something somewhere in all the material in preparation for tonight's deliberations, that maybe the, the state police are not allowed to give out FOID card information, they're not?
To my knowledge, they are not, there was, there was some potential legislation to allow that, and I do believe it was defeated, though.
Okay, because my thoughts were, if, if your database had that information, who holds a FOID card, but then again, really, offenders, if somebody's crazy enough to use a weapon to kill or maim somebody, they're not sane enough to necessarily have to possess a FOID card, they're gonna get their hands on a weapon and use it unlawfully anyhow, so, I can't support this bottom line.
Any other comments by the council, Alderman Tack?
Yeah, I'll make it brief, I'm in favor of an innocuous placeholder to protect home rule, and I emphasize innocuous, I think the ordinance that's been proposed to us is unpalatable, unwise, unenforceable, and unconstitutional, and I can't support it.
I agree with Alderman, yeah, I'm sorry, I agree with Alderman Tack, I'm a, a, a gun owner, in the spirit of being transparent, and I think that by retaining home rule and putting in a placeholder of sorts, something that would be defendable and upholdable, that we can actually use that to, to, to limit assault rifles if we choose in the future, or to limit the state from limiting us on, on assault rifles in the future, so it would work in, in both directions, it would allow us to be, to, to follow the will of the, of the constituency here, but I think, along with Ald, like Alderman Tack said, something that would be much more of a placeholder, something designed at, at the bare minimum to retain the home rule.
Any other comments, Alderman Reisenberg?
I was gonna withhold final comment until I heard from the public, however, I, I very strongly agree with everything kind of that's been said, particularly, and more importantly, we must preserve our home rule prerogative, and in terms of any ordinance that does so, I think less is more.
Can I just, can I just respond to that, because I've looked at the draft ordinance, and I've listened to some of the things that were said about what we're doing, the, the idea of safes and trigger locks, Heller has clearly said, you can't do it, so we're gonna have an unconstitutional ordinance, and we're gonna get sued, where the registration purports to require the approval of the police chief, but there are no standards, that will not sustain any kind of due process review, so the trouble is, we're all talking about preserving home rule on this one thing, because it is a very, very small thing, and the state can at any time, and it will, preempt us, because it would like all the firearm laws in Illinois to be uniform, this is not against us, it's trying to get the entire state firearms laws comprehensible, so you don't have to go from village to village wondering what the laws are, so I think the idea of uniformity is positive, I don't think this is an attack against us, I, I think it sounds good, but it's a red herring to try to put a placeholder in, I think we should just let it pass, and, and, you know, it will be uniform, I don't think it's gonna be the end of the world, it's certainly not a great threat to our home rule, and if we put something on the books, it's likely to draw litigation, and then sometime in the future, someone's gonna want to tinker with it and say, let's make it a complete ban, let's just get rid of this, thank you.
Alderman Palmer will be signing autographs after the meeting.
I have a question, and this is for Marla, if, if we wanted to define an assault weapon, let's say, is a fully automatic long gun or handgun, even though they're already federally prohibited, would that be enough for us to have a placeholder, and if not, then what if we said, how about a belt-fed long rifle that's got a hundred and fifty rounds?
I think that unfortunately, because of the way this was drafted, it's unclear, it's unclear if the way that an assault weapon is defined initially is able to be amended, while it does say that the ordinance can be amended, it's not clear whether or not the definition of an assault weapon can be amended, I think that by having a definition of assault weapon on the book and some regulation associated with it like that, you're in a better position in terms of having a placeholder than, you know, if you just said, we hereby regulate assault weapons, so I think that that's closer, but in determining how a court would come out on that, it's, it's not clear whether or not the definition of assault weapon could be part of the ordinance that would be amended, I would also note, though, that if there ever were any challenges to any regulations that were passed, the city would maintain its authority to amend those regulations, you know, prior to expending any significant amount of money on them as an option.
And who's going to challenge us for vagueness, when you look at House Bill 183, talk about vague and ambiguous, who's gonna challenge us, the state of Illinois, and do they have the money to litigate? From a practical standpoint, do we really have to be concerned?
No, I think from a practical standpoint, having something on the books would likely preserve your home rule authority, I'm reluctant to say that would be enough, because it's hard to determine from the language of this act whether or not it would be enough, and it's hard to determine where courts have, have been going, whether or not a court would uphold that, but I think that if you are identifying something as an assault weapon, and then regulating the possession and ownership of it, that's inconsistent with state law, you're at least meeting the letter of the law here to preserve your home rule authority.
Can I ask a simple question, if there's a court challenge to this, wouldn't it be wiser for whomever is challenging it to challenge the state law itself, why would you challenge individual communities, why wouldn't you try to just overturn the constitutionality of the state regu, regulation, yeah, I mean, simpler?
I would, I would think that it would be unlikely to challenge the city of Lake Forest, because you have such an easy ability to amend it at any time, which would thwart challenges pretty quickly, because you could come back and any offending provision, change that, and it would make challenges be incredibly costly for anyone challenging you, which would be different than the state, which amending takes a, a lot more time to get anything done in the state, and we would be able to respond, you know, within weeks of any challenge, to get any potentially offending ordinance off the books.
But the state law itself, could that be challenged as a whole, instead of attacking the municipality?
Certainly, that would make more sense from, you know, an endgame perspective from anyone that wants to challenge it, they would, they would get a lot more done by doing that than challenging the city of Lake Forest.
So the fear of litigation itself, and, you know, whatever side of this you're on, just backing off whatever your concern is for the fear of litigation, you know, if you're serving for the best of the community, you can't be guided merely by cost, there is a right versus wrong, no matter what side of the ordinance you're on, so, again, the practicality and the moral effect of it, you know, I don't think we should be guided merely by the threat of litigation in this, we have to do what's right for the community.
I'm gonna, in the interest of, of time, and in the interest of having a lot of folks who would like to make some comments, I'm gonna take it out to public comment, we have a large stack of folks that have requested time, I'd like to restate a couple of things, and I'd like to draw a couple of ground rules, number one, I'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, if possible, number two, and I think it's obvious that, sitting here for the last hour and a half, you've gotten a little bit of the tenor of, of the council's opinion on this issue, so I'd also ask you to take that, what you've heard tonight into account, either when you make your comments, or if you decide to make your comments, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to get till about nine thirty and see how we're doing, and I'm hoping that, again, we can get through as many residents as we can, and we're going to start with Lake Forest residents first, and we'll, we'll move on that issue, the first person I'd like is, to come up, is Dave Melchheimer, and again, I would ask, again, the hour's getting late, we want to get through as many as we can, please hold your applause, if you would.
I promise, good evening, Dave Melchheimer, first ward resident, I promised the mayor that I would keep this short, and Don, I'm gonna keep this short, I am adamantly opposed to this bill, top to bottom, in its entirety, and I am absolutely with Alderman Palmer, thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir, Liz Bradner, please.
I'm Liz Bradner, 1290 Northwestern Avenue, I came to urge the council to pass a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, I hear what the council is saying, and I see that's not going to happen, but I feel it would be a small but useful response to the tragic murders in Newtown, Connecticut, as a mother, mother of three, one of whom found a gun at home and fired it out of curiosity, I believe assault weapons and high-capacity magazines have no place in private homes or on suburban streets, no place in fact, except in the hands of law enforcement and the military, I think nobody needs an assault weapon for self-protection or hunting, clearly, much else needs to be done to significantly reduce gun violence, mental health care, universal background checks, et cetera, but this we could easily do to make our wonderful city safer, and to show those Newtown parents that their children's deaths made a positive difference, thank you.
Thank you very much, and that does remind me, when you do come up, for the record, would you state your address as well, next person, Dottie Thummler?
I'm Dottie Thummler, 551 Beverly, I, I want to thank, excuse me, Dr. Palmer, Mr. Palmer, thank you very much, I support our Second Amendment right, it's a constitutional right, and I believe you should all consider yes or no, do you believe in our constitutional right, thank you.
Thank you very much, next individual, Laura Brinkerhoff?
No comment.
No comment, thank you, ma'am, Bennett Stevens?
My name is Bennett Stevens, I live at 274 Cherokee Road, in one sentence, I'll tell you why gun laws do not work, they do not work because they only apply to those of us who abide by them, and we are not the problem, if you want to pass laws to keep down criminals and crazy people, that's a totally separate issue, but not, do not pass gun laws that only apply to us law-abiding citizens, because all they do is reduce our freedom, I'd also like to know who decided the magazine size, that it's safe for me to have ten rounds, but not eleven, it's, I, I don't need eleven to defend myself, I noticed when the Boston bomber was killed, eighty shots were fired, how come they get eighty and I get ten, who decided that, and a shotgun maximum size is five, that I can't have more than five, I'd like to have that discussed if we're gonna go that way, finally, the Chicago laws, I believe, are still being argued in the courts, and I've heard informally that millions of dollars have been expended on them, thank you.
Thank you very much, next, resident Brad Cundy?
No comment.
Thank you, Nancy Voorhees?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, Fred Lane?
My name is Fred Lane, I live at 853 Castle Gate Court, my wife and I recently moved to Lake Forest, I'm a twenty-three-year veteran of law enforcement, I was a Chicago police officer for fourteen years, I'm currently a federal agent, I'm a firsthand witness to failed regulation, failed registration schemes, and failed outright bans, they simply don't work, and I'm opposed to this measure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane, and thank you for your service, Marie Nemiroff?
No comment.
Thank you, Guy Wilbur?
Guy Wilbur, Fourth Ward, I'd like to read just one thing here, I'm totally against this ordinance, but let me read this, "This year will go down in history for the first time in the civilized nation, as full gun registration, our streets will be safer, our police more efficient, and the world will follow our lead into the future," Adolf Hitler, Chancellor of Germany, 1933, gun registration does not work, I'm totally against this ordinance, I think the, you should address the definition of assault weapons, I think there's a opening there to preserve home rule, I'm in favor of that, definitely, but I think they can work something out that you can preserve this, and is, this assault weapon definition should be looked into, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur.
Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Phelps Langtry. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Phelps Langtry, 1230 Northwestern Avenue. Looking at this Chicago ordinance, it was very confusing at the beginning. And I really appreciate your discussion. And I think that the whole answer is, as Guy just said, redefine assault weapons because the military doesn't define assault weapons. So we can divot any definition we want and pass it so we keep our home rule. And I thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Craig Stern, perhaps, Stein?
Craig Strom.
Thank you.
And I live at 346 East Spruce in the city of Lake Forest. I just have a couple of quick comments, and as Mr. Kelly suggested, most of us came with prepared comments, but I can see that you don't need most of that because we've discussed all of those issues. But one quick question I had was, I was curious if anyone knows if this proposed legislation preempts Lake Forest's ability to maintain their restriction on the discharge of firearms in Lake Forest?
You know, that's a good question. I'll have to look a little bit more into, I know the legislative history won't matter as much, but we can look into that and come back on the, at our next meeting when this is up for second reading, if this is up for second reading, and discuss that a little bit further.
I was just curious. And secondly, I'd like to consider perhaps that the ordinance that you passed perhaps could simply make a recommendation that assault weapons be safely stored or locked when they're stored without actually commanding it? You don't have to define, I don't believe there's any requirement to define an assault rifle or assault weapon, but if you simply recommend that assault weapons are safely stored and transported, that you would preserve your rights? And then I think Mr. Novit suggested that the city might be interested in additional training for gun owners. And I don't know that you need an ordinance to do that. All you have to do is ask the police department to advertise the fact that they're offering those courses and do so. And if you want to attract lots of people, do it for free. They'll come out of the woodwork for a free lunch any day of the week. And to address the lady's concern about universal background checks, I believe the state of Illinois already has a universal background check program called the FID program. But that is all I have to say. Thank you. And I am, in fact, not in favor of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Carlton Marcyen?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Try to be very brief. Carl Marcyen, 475 Greenwood here in Lake Forest. I'm an attorney, CPA, partner in a law firm, Schiller, Duque, and To inflect. Was in Marine Corps for three years, also a member of the Chicago Crime Commission. Ran for Lake County Board and successfully, but in Lake County, I carried about 95, in Lake Forest, carried about 95% of the votes. Have you know that as part of being a lawyer, sometimes we run into issues. And one of the issues I ran to about 14 years ago was a death threat. My client was murdered right before trial, and the police came to me, and apparently I was number two, and they told me, you know, "We can't protect you all the time. You're going to have to protect yourself." Well, what does it tell you? Self-defense is a major element in the right to bear arms, along with the Second Amendment and along with the sport of it. As far as the proposed ordinance, the registration issue is easily solved. Why register? We were told, oh, so you know who's got weapons in case something happens. Just assume everyone has weapons. Number two, storage. As far as storage is concerned, do you know that it takes less than two seconds for someone to cover 20 feet? There are studies, there are police studies on this. So if someone breaks into your house and you've got to run over and go into your storage cabinet or reach under your bed and take out the cable or take out the trigger guard, you're gone. It's too late. You don't have time. As far as the potential litigation, who would sue? It would be citizens of Lake Forest who would be suing the city. Not the state of Illinois, not the National Rifle Association, not the Illinois State Rifle Association, but perturbed citizens of the city. And it won't cost $1,000. It'll cost tens of thousands of dollars. And once people get on the bandwagon, it could be 100,000s of dollars. It's a, we're concerned with ultimately, maybe a little far-fetched, but registration becomes potential for confiscation. And your definition of assault weapons includes practically every, I'd say one, not every, about 80% of the handguns that are sold today. They fit the definition of assault weapon here. Undoubtedly, that would be found unconstitutional. So I echo Alderman Palmer and say that the best regulation right now is no regulation. There is no crime committed in Lake Forest that requires this type of ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark Stevenson?
Thank you for staying late and listening to all this. Mark Stevenson, I live on Catherine Lane. Been a resident of Lake Forest for almost 30 years. I practice medicine at the local hospital. I've raised my children in Lake Forest. I have lots of friends here who have lots of children also. And if I thought for a second that an ordinance like this would make any of them any safer, I would be strongly in favor of it. This will not do anything, as studies have shown repeatedly and experience that Alderman Palmer alluded to, have proven, this does not work. And on the other hand, it would impose tremendous hardships on many of your constituents who are hunters, collectors, sports shooters, because most of the weapons that people have and keep safely and use safely and do not cause any problems fall under this definition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jane Partridge?
First, I might say that I'm surprised that you don't have this background. We've been studying this in a subcommittee in League of Women Voters, and we call it gun responsibility. And we've looked at it from all different angles. The League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff believes that the proliferation of semi-automatic assault weapons and large-capacity ammo clips is a major health and safety threat. The League supports strong measures to limit the accessibility and regulate the ownership of these items by private citizens. In addition, the League believes that there should be enforcement of strict penalties for improper possession of and crimes committed with assault weapons and high-capacity ammo clips and the adequate allocation of resources to better regulate and monitor gun dealers. When the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff recently reviewed mass murders, most of the weapons used were assault weapons or semi-automatic handguns. The increased lethality is because large-capacity ammunition magazines enable a shooter to rapidly fire off many rounds without having to reload the firearm. Large-capacity ammunition magazines have made possible some of the worst mass murders ever committed. Given the heartbreaking killing of young, innocent children in what should have been a safe, learning environment, it is clearly time that our elected officials prohibit the buying of high-capacity magazines and assault weapons. This is not about being anti-gun or gun control. This is about sensible, responsible gun policies for our health and safety. I would just like to say two things. One, I heard on the radio a member of the NRA say that any hunter who needs a semi-automatic to kill a deer is not a sportsman. But then I'd like to tell you a personal story. When I was teaching at New Trier, Lori Dan went into a grade school in Hubbard Woods, and she killed and maimed a number of children. If she had had an automatic weapon like this, the whole grade would have been wiped out. We had to lock down all the schools until she was caught, which was long after school hours. It was all day. And she was going around shooting in different neighborhoods. If she'd had a gun like this, many people would have been killed. All I have to say, I've lived here for 40 years, and I care about Lake Forest. I would like us to make a statement that we care more about the health and safety of our community than we do our own personal inclinations or desires.
Thank you, Ms. Partridge. Tom Marks. Going once, going twice. David Grumhouse. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dean Grumhouse. I live at 47 Walnut Road. I'm sure some of you know my father, David Grumhouse, Jr. He has previously served as an alderman for the Lake Forest City Council. I have been an active participant in various firearm-related activities ranging from hunting to tactical shooting for the past six years. As such, I have a great respect for our Second Amendment rights. These proposed regulations on semi-automatic firearms and assault weapons will have a negative impact on my shooting sports. And while Lake Forest may not be attempting an all-out ban on semi-automatic weapons, any form of registration or storage requirements is, in my mind, a violation of the Second Amendment. Remember, in the original text of the Second Amendment, the founding fathers included the line, "shall not be infringed." I just want to remind everyone here of that, and I encourage the council members to vote accordingly to their country's constitution. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak and have a good night.
Thank you, Dean, very much. Michael Shanahan? Thank you, chief.
My name is Michael Shanahan. I live at 220 Keith Lane. And first of all, I would like to support my opposition, or voice my opposition to this proposed legislature. And I'd like to read something I wrote down a few minutes ago. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to speak out on the issue of the registration of semi-automatic weapons with standard-capacity magazines, in that in the past, we have seen time and time again instances in which registration of firearms has been a direct precursor to and enabler of their confiscation, at points in time during which their ownership and use are most imperative to the protection of a private citizen's lives and liberties. In America, we have seen authorities confiscate firearms in SUD situations as natural disasters and riots, as well as other WRL or Without Rule of Law situations. This has directly impeded upon the ability of citizens to defend themselves, an ability proven to be very real and effective by citizens in those same conflicts. For example, the Korean shopkeepers in the LA riots were able to band together and utilize semi-automatic firearms to protect their shops, homes, and families from looters, while across the city, police were hard at work locking down and confiscating firearms of the same type from other law-abiding citizens. I think that we can all agree right now that the right to bear arms extends to protect the ownership of firearms in crisis situations. And yet, in times of widespread fear, many seem to forget this and sit by idly while the police confiscate legally-owned firearms in large numbers. The potential for this unlawful confiscation is high and evidently so. And therefore, I advocate the staunch opposition of any legislature that would make it easier for the police to round up these defensive arms and thereby make our citizens unable to protect themselves when they need to most. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Adam Sachs?
Hello, my name is Adam Sachs. I live at 1168 Lynette in Lake Forest. I'd like to start out by saying I am opposed to this ordinance. I'd also like to thank the council here for taking time to deliberate it in a real logical sense. I was witness to Highland Park's ordinance and watching it pass, I wouldn't call that real logic. I'd call it a foregone conclusion with a group of people waiting for the public to get their words out of their mouth so they could vote no. You guys have done a much better job. I would like to point out that the WRL situation is a reality, and we just witnessed a situation in Canada where flooding was, you know, the leading factor to removing guns from a home. And then there really was no reason for that, and I don't want to see that here either. I'd also like to point out that the Constitution says that it shall not be infringed, but it does also say that it is for the purpose of a well-regulated militia. And I think that that language has not been contested, and if it has, then I'm wrong. But I think that any home rule preservation we have should be to enhance our ability to train people to safely use firearms, because that is consistent with a well-regulated firearms owner, whether you want to call it a militia or whatever you want to call it. I think that is something that would absolutely support the Second Amendment, and I would support anything that enhances our ability to safely use weapons. Unfortunately, that would be inconsistent with the House bill, so I would urge that you simply vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. William Briggs?
William Briggs, 366 East Wisconsin. I'm a NRA member and certified range safety officer. So I understand a lot of these issues that you are thinking you need to be confronted with tonight. I thought one of the interesting suggestions was, why are we here discussing this tonight? And I'll tell you, although our state representative couldn't, it's, there are two people, Mr. Madigan and Mrs. Madigan. That's why you're even discussing this issue. Some of the discussion of the home rule and a seemingly preoccupation with maintaining that in this issue is purely, I feel, coming from a manipulation by Mr. and Mrs. Madigan to force you into thinking you need to deal with this issue. I think it's a non-issue as far as this particular legislation that you're discussing tonight. It's unnecessary. And the other points that I was hearing tonight all centered pretty much around the Constitution. And I think when you all took an oath of office, you stated that you would uphold the Constitution. A lot of the discussion tonight regarding the Constitution is upsetting to me. I oppose this particular legislation that you're talking about tonight, and I hope you do nothing.
Thanks, sir. Jim Whalen?
Jim Whalen, 431 McCormick Drive. I oppose this ordinance. There's a couple of points, why I oppose the ordinance, I think it's been dealt with quite well here tonight. A couple of points for consideration that I haven't heard about, and maybe I missed it. One is with respect to a registration list. Does the city have the ability to keep that confidential? And if not, I think you're presenting yourselves with a lot of problems, because somebody's going to want to publish it. And if it's a freedom of information or whatever we have, a sunshine law, I think that's a consideration. Point two is one of enforcement. I can foresee a lot of reasons people not wanting to register their firearms. What's to be done with that? What if a neighbor turns somebody in? Are we going to be in a police state? Are we going to be looking for, is the police chief going to be approaching city residents, asking them? I think that's a real possibility here, because we all have neighbors. Finally, one other point I just wanted to make was with respect to the home rule issue. This has to be a statewide controlled issue for the simple reason that infringing on the rights of the Lake Forest residents doesn't do anything about people who live across the border. So we have surrounding towns that don't have any restrictions. So the false sense of security one gets with registering guns in our town doesn't do anything about North Chicago, Waukegan, and Highwood. And I think that that in and of itself should tell people that just having a placeholder isn't a good solution either. This has to be done at the state level. It can't be done locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Mark Shaw? Mark Shaw?
Mark Shaw, twenty-two-year resident of eleven-fifty-five Highland Avenue, Lake Forest, in the Fourth Ward. I come before you tonight as someone that is an attorney that represents both manufacturers of firearms, as well as individual citizens that are hunters, sports enthusiasts, collectors, et cetera. With, with respect to some of the issues that were raised tonight about assault weapons and whether or not you could redefine assault weapons, et cetera, one of the problems that the federal assault weapons ban had back in the nineties was that the legislation was designed to try to define as many variants of a, of so-called assault weapons that the Congress determined needed to be regulated. The problem with that legislation, as far as workability, was the fact that all you had to do was change a few type of cosmetic things on the weapon itself, which then made the weapon not violative of the federal law. They had things like flash suppressors, which, when you fire the gun, you wouldn't be able to see the flash from the, from the shot. They had bayonet lugs on them, they had pistol grips, things of this nature, that were easily modified by manufacturers, so that a weapon that was once banned or prohibited was no longer subject to the regulation. So to the extent that you try to have an all-inclusive type of statute or ordinance, you're going to have difficulty in the future if people come up with variants on that. The suggestion by Alderman, Edelman, could we have basically a belt-fed machine gun, or a fully-automatic machine gun being our definition of an assault weapon, then be able to modify that down the road? My position on that as a lawyer would be yes, simply because the preemption legislation that the state has passed, that they give you a ten-day window to deal with, allows you to modify the ordinance. It doesn't say that there's only certain parts of the ordinance you can modify. It says that you can modify the ordinance. You can make it less restrictive, as Representative Drury said, or you can make it more restrictive. You could make it more restrictive by putting more guns under the definition, or you could make it less restrictive by taking guns off of the type of ordinance that you have in mind. The idea that someone brought up about putting a red sticker on so-called assault weapons in somebody's house, I guess, obviously, that's a form of regulation. To the extent that you're looking for a place saver, because you want to be able to address some unforeseen concern five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, the least restrictive restriction that you have might be the red sticker idea. Personally, I don't favor this ordinance, because I think it's nothing more than a feel-good ordinance. Notwithstanding what you may have heard tonight from some proponents or some explainers of this bill, this is legislation that has been supported by the Brady Pact, which is one of the largest anti-gun owner organizations in the United States of America. It's supported by Governor Quinn, and it's supported by Lieutenant Governor Sheila Simon. Their objective is to let cities know as quickly as possible that they need to pass something if they're a home-rule city, so that they can get some legislation on the book to create a patchwork. I think what needs to be considered with respect to registration, the issue was raised, do you have access to FOID information? Lisa Madigan had threatened to turn over the information of all FOID card possessors to the press. She was taken to court and eventually backed away from that, because it was determined that she could not do that legally. So, no, you don't have access to the FOID information, notwithstanding Attorney General Madigan's intent. I hear my time is up, so I rise in opposition to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dan Cox? We're almost done.
My name's Dan Cox. I'm from five-ninety-three West Gailton, around Lake Illinois. My grandfather served in World War I, and there's few things he wrote in his diary, but one of them was, "The men that he served with from Lake Forest served with distinction and honor." Now, when you look at taking away our constitutional rights, you look at the veterans, you look at the Fourth of July, it's right around the corner, and you got to ask yourself, "Do not infringe, shall not be infringed." It's pretty black and white. Shall not be infringed. It is not the place of a city council, or of the village council, to infringe upon our constitutional rights. If the state government and the federal government can't figure out how to do it, then how is it that you should? As you've all asked, how are we supposed to do this? Why was this dumped in our lap? It was dumped in your lap by a governor who can't accomplish anything in a legislature. Well, they can't do anything either. So what I say is, punt it back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Looks like something Hendricks, Con Hendricks, perhaps? I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Connor Hendricks. I am a military veteran and spouse to an active-duty military person. My wife is stationed at Naval Station Great Lakes, and I reside in military housing in Highland Park. I'm here tonight because I do a lot of business in Lake Forest. I find it to be a very comforting and very beautiful and scenic location, to which I often exercise along the Lakeshore Trail, do my grocery shopping at Jewel Osco. There are many problems that I see with this proposed legislation here. As everybody who has ever fired a gun or held a, held a gun can testify, the best way to control how you fire is with two hands. This proposal actually specifies any firearm that can be fired using more than one hand is illegal. As a young gentleman from this room behind me specified, there is the Militia Act of nineteen oh three, which defines an organized militia as an able-bodied person ages seventeen to forty-five, not in the military or National Guard. This is very relevant when you consider this country's history, because when Japan surrendered to American forces, they specifically stated they did not invade mainland America, because they feared there was a blade behind every grass. They knew their casualties would be high. We have seen repeated attacks on this country's soil since then, especially with the nine-eleven terrorist attacks, and we have seen, unfortunately, how an unarmed population responds to that. Along with the Militia Act of nineteen oh three is the Illinois State Constitution enacted in nineteen seventy, Article twelve, all able-bodied persons, just like the Militia Act of nineteen oh three. The governor is to use militia to enforce laws, suppress insurrection, or repel invasion. If firearms are regulated, as this proposal suggests, we are not going to be able to fire our firearms accurately in order to suppress a revolt, or a insurrection of some sort. Additionally, you have proposed a magazine restriction of no more than ten rounds. Now, I'm a bigger guy. I'm two-hundred-and-ninety pounds, six foot one. I'm sure I can handle quite a bit more than somebody who's half my size. However, the firearm that fits best in my hand is a full-size firearm. I prefer the Glock twenty-one, which is used by many police officers throughout the country, and that firearm's magazine capacity is thirteen. Why do I need thirteen? For the individual who has eleven or twelve. But as a prior Marine infantryman, I hope I only need one. I have heard Sandy Hook brought up, and it should be noted that the state of Connecticut, when all states are ranked, in terms of firearm control, ranked fourth and most strictest, and created a target-rich environment in which nobody was able to defend their children. As a parent, I would be horrified, just like the day I was when I was watching the news and saw those children who were massacred, and there was nobody who could defend them.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Thank you for your service and for the service of your wife. Phil Reynolds? Down to about, we've got two left, so we ought to make our nine-thirty deadline.
Phil Reynolds here, six-fifty Gorfield Avenue. I just want to say something really quickly. I, I really believe that the members of the city council are very thoughtful, articulate people, and I just want to, you know, bring out the point that this is very much some rushed, a rushed ordinance that really has not been well thought out. It's a, for all intents and purposes, registration for all popular, modern firearms across the board, and it really has no implications in terms of active safety. I believe that most first responders are all taught to deal with an agitated person as a potential aggressor that may well be armed. I mean, this is all a situational assessment of, of the safety and the, the risks is what they're trained to do. So I think that having information to that, if they might, if somebody may have a firearm, is really not going to effectively add to their safety on their day-to-day basis. If, if it would, I think that everyone would really, if there's any evidence of that, would, would want to support something that would encourage that. The other issue that I have, as was mentioned before, was that there is not a, a very descriptive criteria for how the police would approve or deny somebody for the registration process. And I think that without really going down that road and understanding all the logistics, it runs a great risk. I also think that if we go down that road, what is going to prohibit somebody from having a firearm? Is it a conviction of a violent crime? Of course, we can all agree that we, we do not want somebody like that having firearms. What if it goes to the other extreme, where somebody was, perhaps, got into an argument in, in the grocery store, or something like that? Could that be considered enough to potentially consider them an aggressive person, where they can't have the firearms? If you have read recent news, there have been situations very much like that that have occurred. So I urge the city council to please do nothing, and nothing with this, with this law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carl Lambrecht?
My name is Carl Lambrecht. I'm from Highland Park. A friend of mine in Bulgaria was trained by her father in the late nineteen thirties to use firearms. When the communists was taken over by the communist terrorists, the guns were the first things to be taken away. Her father had a small machine shop, employing about six people. He thought he would be in charge of it. He knew he would lose it as a business. Somebody else, a better communist, took over that business. I'll show you this little pamphlet here. See, it's this Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States, foundation documents. This is only regulations for education, and it's a partial list. It starts with the corrupt Illinois Constitution. And I call it corrupt, because it has a lot of defects in it from nineteen seventy-one. This should be corrected. Then we have a book in the Highland Park Library called The Hidden Hitler. This is a good book to read. Anybody with a library card here in Lake Forest can take out that book just by requesting it from Lake Forest, and they'll bring it here. And the main reason we have problems is simply corruption. This state is so corrupt, that's the reason criminals have guns, and we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambrecht. Thank you to everyone who took the time, both to comment, as well as to stay tonight and be involved in this discussion. I think we'd all agree it's important for a lot of reasons, and we are grateful, as a council, that you were willing to come and be a part of it. I'd like to take it back to the council for any final comments, or thoughts, or suggestions. Alderman Palmer, I see you about to jump toward the mic.
Never, never wait for an invitation. The ordinance that's been proposed to us is clearly more than a placeholder, and it, I think, is clearly unconstitutional. We have a number of options. We can ask the staff or our outside attorneys to come back and try to give us a red sticker type of placeholder thing. We have time. I don't think Governor Quinn will sign this before July eighth. We'll have another meeting within ten days of that. So we don't have to act tonight. But the trouble is, almost anything we do, we are, we are inflicting something on our residents. We are treating them as the problem. They're not the problem. Why should we make them register guns that they lawfully have? Why should we make, we publicize that? And, you know, in Connecticut, I believe it was, a list of firearm owners was got by a member of the press and distributed in the paper. That is just, you know, a prescription for mischief. I think the best thing we could do, because I think, you know, the placeholder idea, in the end of the day, is either likely to get us in trouble, or like us, likely to make us seem silly, is to do nothing, and I'll be glad to make a motion to take no action to regulate assault weapons in Lake Forest. And if that passes, then it's over. If not, we can always ask them to go back and do something and bring it to us at the next meeting. So if that's acceptable, I'd like to make a motion to do nothing to regulate assault weapons in the city of Lake Forest.
Do a second to that motion?
Before we second that, can I take it one step further? We're asking to legislate something that's restrictive in nature, even though it's more symbolic than it is substantive. How about we consider legislating something that's affirmative? What if we were to say, the city of Lake Forest approves of the lawful purchase, possession, and storage of assault weapons until we change our minds to do so otherwise?
Don't, don't kill the lily. Let's just, let's just deal with what we got and, and stop it.
We've got a motion on the table. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I'd like a roll-call vote, please.
Any discussion?
I will take discussion, if you'd like.
I would, I would just like to say, I think it's premature to make a motion. I think there's some of us would like to talk first. We can vote now, but I'll vote, I'll vote no on it, because we haven't had a chance to discuss it.
Just as a matter of principle.
As a matter of principle.
Alderman Palmer, could I ask you to remove your motion?
I'll withdraw it until there's been discussion.
Okay. Could I ask for some further discussion?
I, I would just like to say that if we pursue this line of discussion this evening, we'll be here way into the evening, probably past an eleven o'clock deadline, if in fact, we used to have a deadline at the Plan Commission, eleven o'clock, come soon. We'd go back, we'd go by that. I think if there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight aldermen, each will have a different nuance, a different twist. I don't think we can get there this evening, and I think it might be too premature to try to get there this evening. So I would like to postpone, I think we can discuss it, but I think we ought to postpone any conclusion until our next meeting on the fifteenth.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I, I would just like to discuss the, some of the public testimony. I heard a lot of people that were against the bill. I don't know if they meant the ordinance or the bill. I think, as Representative Drury said, you know, he was also against the bill, and I think he was mischaracterized at least once, so I wanted to clear that up. This has been thrust upon us, as it was discussed earlier, and I think that was missed in some of the public comment as well. We're not, we're not taking an initiative here. We're responding to a, to a ten-day deadline, and, and the question is, do we pass an ordinance, or do we not pass an ordinance? And I think that was a, a bit missed on some of the, from hearing the public testimony. Personally, I'm, I'm a bit torn. I think we should, we should give it more, a deeper look, on the one hand. On the other hand, I don't know, we're either going to do nothing, or we're going to pass a placeholder, if I'm getting, if I'm hearing everybody right here. There's only two things we can do. So maybe, you know, maybe that's the discussion. Do we do nothing, or do we put in a placeholder? I mean, is there, are there any other ideas? Because I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to move forward.
Well, the one thought, and, you know, again, following up on your idea and Jack's idea, is with the unpredictable nature of the state of Illinois, the bill that might be passed could change a hundred eighty degrees in the next ten days. God only knows what those people will do down there. I don't like the law fundamentally. The one thing I think we're unified, no matter what side of the fence you're on, is the flaws of the state law, and just the nature of it. It's not something that should be thrown to us. It should have been something determined by the Illinois Legislature. But again, when we come back on the fifteenth, this law may have changed entirely, and maybe we're acting a little prematurely. Maybe we should wait to see what the state does. We've had our discussion at this point. We have direction, and we'll be further guided by what happens in Springfield.
Yeah, if I may, to your point, Alderman Moore, and I, I would agree. I think, I think we do have three options. One option is to, to agree and pass something, some form of the ordinance that's in front of us tonight, and I think, I'm hearing the majority of council saying that's probably not where we're headed. Option two would be the other extreme, as Alderman Palmer suggested, and simply decide to do nothing. Option three, perhaps, could be to table this, and, and as Alderman Noval mentioned, see what happens with the legislative- happens with the legislation, see what happens with the governor. And then, as we've done tonight, we've gotten a great deal of comment, a great deal of input, we would still have time to do something that would allow us to pass a placeholder, if the council so deemed that appropriate or necessary. So that could be a third option, that we simply, instead of deciding not to do anything with the ordinance, we simply could table it and respond to what happens in Springfield, which could be a third option. Am I correct? That's absolutely correct. I would say, though, and maybe it's selfishly from the staff standpoint, what we've heard is less is more, let's do something innocuous. And what I'm concerned about is that we table the dialogue till the 15th, and then we're really under the gun at the 15th. And so, you know, it would make it a lot easier for the staff, and I'm sure I speak for the city attorney as well, if there was representatives of the city council that would work with us, work with the police personnel, to craft that less is more innocuous placeholder that we're hearing, that it's something, is it perfect? No, but we're unfortunately dealing with perfect situation here, that we're trying to do what's best long-term, and we don't know what that truly is going to be. The other point I guess I would make is, and maybe some members of the public don't realize, that ordinances usually take two readings unless there's a supermajority of the city council. And so, I guess to put something out there, what if you were to strip out Sections 3 and 4 of this, just wipe it out, pass first reading of that, sending it to a committee to work on it, clean it up. In the meantime, we'll see what the governor does or doesn't do with the bill, and then at least when it comes back next time to the city council, it's had some further refinement, dialogue, and discussion that's taken place over the course of the next five to 10 days, whatever the case might be.
You know, you have the ability, I think, to circulate drafts before the meeting and individually get our responses back. The idea of trying to do something with this ordinance tonight, I think, is a very bad idea. I don't have a problem with them trying to get something that's less restrictive, and they can do this without having a city council meeting. They can just start firing drafts and get each one of our comments back, so we'll be ready. I don't have a problem with our being ready, and if we decide we want to do a placeholder, to have something ready. And we do have time. We will have plenty of time. Again, that's not what I think is the best solution, but I think that probably is the one that has the most support within the council.
I get a sense of that's kind of where...
Yeah, I think the only thing I do want to mention is that, keep in mind, you might get an emergency email from me, because if the governor signs this tomorrow, then we're having an emergency meeting. So I just want to make sure that the council's aware of all the different options that are out there and considerations.
One thing we should do is make sure we know who's going to be available and who's not going to be available when, because if we can't get a quorum, that's a problem.
Right.
So if the governor signs it tomorrow, there's 10 days. Tomorrow's the second. That would be 12 days. It's before Iran, 10 days. Is it 12, the 12th?
Yeah, but your next meeting's not till the 15th.
I know, but if you're saying who's going to be available, it would be on the 12th.
Oh, yeah. And we could send out tomorrow an email just asking you what your availability is from now till whenever.
Bob, I think it's prudent for the council to see, to Bob's comment, I think it's prudent for the councils to see something from Marlo and Vic that does kind of frame the placeholder issue. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, in teeny-tiny minimal terms.
Yeah, it's got to be as weak as possible, but it sticks.
It's hard for us, I think it's hard for the, I'm going to speak for the council. It's hard for the council, I think, to get their arms around what that's going to look like. And I'll jump in and speak for the council, say, I think we're all prepared to do whatever it takes to do, be wherever we need to be. But I think, I think we need to throw the ball back to Marlo and to Vic and say, look, we need, we need you to frame this a little bit, given what we've heard and what you've heard us say.
Yeah. And I think one of the minimum things is the $700 fine. If we're going to have a red sticker, that should probably be lowered to a lot less than $700.
Like a dollar.
Right. No, and I think that that's something that we can do. Again, as Bob mentioned earlier, we tried to give kind of just examples of what a, what registration could look like, what a ban could look like, or what just safety regulations could look like. Hearing what you say, we can take that back and try to scale that back so that we are falling within the language of the bill, but being as least restrictive as possible while still maintaining the home rule authority.
Mr. Whalen, who spoke here earlier, brought up a point of some restrictions applying to non-residents. I don't know if that would help, but it would certainly be weaker.
And I think the hope is, like everything else in Springfield, it doesn't happen very quickly.
So you're looking for a motion to table this, to have the staff draft new proposed place sticker or placeholder?
Yes.
I'll make such a motion.
Second. I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Jack seconded.
Jack had second.
Alderman Novit.
His far is voting for...
Table it.
Table it. Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the council, and thank you again for all the residents who came and contributed and made your voice heard. We appreciate it, and we heard you. Next item, next item on the agenda, additional items for city council discussion. Anything, Bob, from your side, any members of the council?
Fourth of July.
We talked about Fourth of July already.
Did you do that? It's a lot of time ago.
Need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Good job.